So we will now get into our study sessions. We have two items this evening. The first one is receive a presentation and provide direction regarding greenery and landscaping of downtown streetscape, Centennial Plaza and Posey Park. And first, we'll turn it over to our city manager, who then also we will have our community services director also participating as well. City manager.
Good afternoon, city council, members of the public, Javon Grogan, city manager. So we are here tonight, as the mayor said, for a study session on our downtown streetscape and two of our special areas downtown, Centennial Park and Posey, Centennial Plaza and Posey Park. So the idea tonight is to present council with a number of options and let you know of the staff's progress on the downtown areas. We are not asking for final direction. What we will be asking for is council feedback because all three of these projects require funding. And so based on your feedback, we will attempt to identify funds in the budget that will come before you at the end of May for next fiscal year, fiscal year 2021. And so there's a lot of rich content that we're going to talk about tonight. I know that similar to the public comment that we just heard, the question is really, what can we do? Because everyone has a vision and everyone wants to improve our downtown. And we know that it's a multi-year, multi-trong effort. There's a quick win project in here and then there's taking our conceptual plan, which is a 30,000 street, streetscape plan down to the block level and making progress on that, which unfortunately we didn't make progress on last fiscal year. And so we did the plan in 2019. And so now we want to take that down to the block by block schematic design level. And so that's what we'll be talking about as well as a quick win for Centennial Plaza and then really wanting to provide you with some rich information and find a direction for where we want to go with Posey Park. So with that, we will share the PowerPoint and I'll turn it over to Ann Matola, our community services director, who by the way, as she may mention, her offices is now downtown. She sees and walks by this eight hours a day at minimum.
Good evening, council members. All right, let's get to slideshow. So yeah, I'm Ann Matola, your community services director. And this evening, I'm really pleased to present several projects from the conceptual downtown streetscape plan for your consideration. And tonight, we're specifically talking about projects that are related to landscape and parks. As you recall, in October 2019, council adopted a conceptual downtown streetscape plan. And there were a number of recommended improvements to activate public spaces, to green the downtown with trees and plantings, update amenities, provide weight finding. The intention of all of these different elements was to create a cohesive and unique downtown identity. So this evening's presentation, we're going to address three elements of the plan, greening and landscaping, activating Centennial Plaza, and activating Posey Parks. And we're also going to discuss the resource needs to move these projects from conceptual design to schematic design. So the first product here for consideration is greening and landscaping San Mateo Avenue. The adopted streetscape plan included restoration of trees to the downtown corridor. And this, some of the images that you'll see are taken from the adopted streetscape plan. So you're all familiar with the existing conditions. You're familiar with the plantings, which are in 49 large planters that line San Mateo Avenue in Genovin. The planters contained a mixed variety of plants and trees. They're not planted really in a manner to create a cohesive design or planting scheme. And they don't really support the unique identity, which was one of the goals and objectives of the streetscape plan. There are also a number of challenges with this particular planting program. Some of our planters have trees. And as you can see, they're not faring so well, maybe except for the one in front of Grand Leader. And I have no idea what Mike is heating it, but that's like the only tree that is that robust on the avenue. And so what we're finding in the planters is a restriction of the root ball that's causing many of the trees to fail. And those that are surviving, with the exception of the one in front of Grand Leader, really are not thriving. Then we have the planters, and those plants in the planters pose another challenge. So the downtown has several different microclimates. So the same plant is going to react differently depending on where the location is on San Mateo Avenue. The irrigation is also limited. And so identifying a species to create a cohesive planting plan has a bit challenging, but the park maintenance team has been working on that. It had been trying to determine what plants thrive in these conditions to try to create some type of cohesive theming with colors, with planting types. And again, it is a bit of trial and error to see which plants establish well. But parks has been establishing the success in a small number of planters before they start broader distribution. That's why you see that not all of the planters are activated. They're really trying to see what will grow, what will thrive, and then they want to grow on success. So the images in this slide show a number of our different successful results. So in the upper left is lavender and red lantana. It's a little overgrown. It's some of the older plantings that we have. The right-hand planter with the tree, it's a newer planting. We knew that lavender and lantana do well, so we tried it in this other location where it's also doing well. And then we have the bottom left. And so it has some of the original lavender. And the flowers are some of the plantings from the community members that have been formally adopting the planters. And so I just want you to kind of keep in mind that when you're doing this, they're also removing some of the things that we're trying to establish. So the intention is really good there with a number of community informal volunteers that have been going up and down the avenue, and you're adding whimsy, they're adding color. The intention is really good, and so we're taking that as a message that it's really time to try to figure out how we do something to make this a real sustainable greening plan for the downtown area. Okay, so this is what we're proposing to do. Staff is proposing to move forward with this element of the streetscape to restore trees to the downtown area. So lining streets is a very simple and iconic way to enhance the beauty and the character of San Mateo Avenue. It'll take some studying on potential issues or restrictions based on existing underground infrastructure. I think some of you are aware that there are culverts on the east side of the street under the sidewalk. So that's one of the issues that we'll really need to take a look at. In the conceptual streetscape plan, the installation is actually called out in bulbouts, similar to what you see on the right in Burlingame. Sidewalk aligned installation with tree grits is also an option. The photo on the left is from Millbrae. There might also be some other potential solutions that we need to explore as we find out more about the site, particularly once we know more about what's happening below ground. The streetscape and the tree installation may also trigger the need for stormwater management, which provides an opportunity to layer landscaping elements with gray level plantings. And I wanted to show you an example of this in Burlingame. These are examples of plantings incorporated into stormwater retention areas. And what you can see is it adds color, it adds greening, and it's actually a purposeful installation as well. So the greening and landscaping of the downtown is highly technical, and it will require the assistance of landscape architectural design services. This resource is going to allow us to take a conceptual streetscape plan to a block-level schematic plan and to compare the process, it's somewhat similar to what we've had to do with the rack build. The project started out in conceptual design, very similar to the streetscape conceptual plan. So the schematic design moves those concepts to real application based on findings of site and environmental constraints and conditions. This is all necessary to get us to the point where we have construction documents and we can actually implement. As I mentioned, the most important technical issue to address is what's happening below the surface with the stormwater pipeline and culvert that exists in the area. And the additional scope is listed here, and it includes utility research, landscape design, topographic site surveys, stormwater management plans, review geotech reports. It's very, it's a highly technical body of work. And so we need to bring that expertise in because it doesn't currently exist in our city. So the proposed next steps for this element is to identify funding in the 21, 22 proposed budget of about $250,000 to bring on some landscape design services to assist us with this project. Now I'm going to move on to another element of the streetscape plan, which is activating special places. And two of the special places that I want to talk about are Centennial Plaza and Posey Park. So starting with Centennial Plaza, we all familiar, we are all familiar with the location in this image here. So I want to take a look at the plan view and kind of walk you through what is existing. So the plantings from this, I'm going to go from San Mateo Avenue heading east. So the plantings that front San Mateo Avenue, they're rather low and rather sparse. The illustration actually makes them look a little bit more colorful and robust than what's there. The area surrounding the fountain, it's relatively level, but it slopes down towards the right, towards the east end of the parcel. So that central planting area that you see, it serves more as a barrier to keep pedestrians from gaining access to the unlevel portion of the site. And while there are elements like the fountain that try to add some visual interest, the existing plaza, it's currently not a program space. And that's the challenge. We really want to improve the plaza so people use it, it becomes activated. And so staff has, we worked on a plan, which we believe that we could execute in a relatively short timeline, relatively low budget, and in a good timeline. And the intention was to make this a place which was more usable, a place where people actually kind of spend time in the park. So again, going from San Mateo Avenue east, plantings on San Mateo Avenue side, right at that entry, we want to do something that marks that this is an entry. And in doing that, we may have to consider moving the time capsule just because it's smack down in the middle of what's the entryway to the park. The area surrounding the planter would be renovated with new river rock and improved DG path. Greening elements include the addition of several trees. When you see the planting in the middle, it's thinned out, and that arc is a retaining wall. So everything to the east of it, we can level out and then create a more usable space there. And then you see tables. And so the idea is there's been certainly an upsurge of eating outdoors. We really want to encourage people to come down to this. Our downtown has like an amazing assortment of restaurants, and this is a really perfect space for people to come and to congregate and to really have this a usable, active, vibrant space. In the lower right-hand part of the picture, you'll see kind of a gazebo. And depending on a partner restaurant, it could be something which they want to install there so they have a dedicated space to send their patrons. So staff has done some estimating on this. We believe that we could accomplish this for 80,000. And so the next steps would be to identify those funds to work on these improvements. Moving on to Posey Park. So we've been spending quite a bit of time over here at this park trying to evaluate site challenges and alternatives to the space, again, to kind of make it a little bit more vibrant, a little bit more usable. So a little bit of history, for I think many of you know this, but if you're people that are watching, they may not know that the fountain was turned off four to five years ago due to failure of the waterproofing of the structure, as well as failure of the structure itself. If you were to go and look in the basins and look at the fountain structure, you'll see exposed rebar, spalling of the concrete. And the waterproofing seal coat, which is almost on the entire structure that you see in this picture, it's peeling and flaking off. It's a very significant failure of that coating. Also, there was a leak that was found. And so staff has been gone, we've gone through different processes of elimination to investigate the source of the leak. And so we have the fountain, the people that work with the fountain plumbing, water department, and leak detection to come out. And what we, the good news is that the fountain plumbing is intact. So we know that that water system is a good viable option for some of the options that we're going to talk about. But the structural ceiling is in such disrepair that that's where we are being advised that the leaks are coming from. So as we look at the next slide, we're going to talk about different options to repurpose or renovate the park. Here we go. And the first four options, there are going to be five options total. And these first four options reuse the existing infrastructure. And there's a price range on each of these options. It's a back-of-the-napkin type estimate. And every one of them would include the $85,000 to repair the actual structure that you see there. So we're all starting, we're starting with 85 as kind of the minimum amount to actually just restore this to a working plaza with a fountain. So that's option number one. Option number two restores the fountain, but also does something with the fountain itself to add more interest to the plaza by including some more murals along the actual structure of the fountain. If you were to go to the plaza, it's very stark. It's very monochromatic. I think there's success in breaking that up with the mosaic murals that are there. And so the idea is if you kind of restore the fountains and have the murals, it becomes more of an interest in the space. And so depending on the materials used and the surface area of coverage of a mural, that could, that alone could be upwards of, you know, 200,000. So we have an estimate of 285,000 for that. Option three restores the fountain and adds landscaping, restores the fountain surfacing, and then adds landscaping to the lower basins. And it's a, it's a very significant price tag for not a lot of space because the basins are only 18 inches. So in a lot of the work that we've been doing and bringing in people to kind of give us estimates and whatnot, there may be, may need to do some excavation of the concrete to give us more depth so there's more success of any plantings that we put there. And option four is a combination of landscaping and mural work. That is the highest amount of 500,000. Option five is to take a note from the streetscape plan and to kind of revisualize and renovate the entire plaza. This is more of intentional placemaking, to include elements that engage people, to encourage them to spend more time there, rather than this be more of a pass-through Caltrain plaza where they just kind of go on their way to the training platform. It looks at creating a very unique, usable urban park space. And this would potentially include the demo of the fountain and starting from scratch. And this is estimated at about $2 million. So there's no funding, currently identified this, for this product. But we have applied for, we put in appropriations requests for the transportation, housing, and urban development appropriations through Congresswoman Spears' office for half a million dollars. That would either take care of options one through four or at least get us through the design phase of a complete renovation of the park. So the next steps for Posey Park would be to identify funding options and then based on the option, that was of the interest of the council to direct staff to proceed an investigating hunt. So at this point, we're looking for direction on the greening and landscaping, the implementation plan for Centennial, direction on Posey Park, and direction on on-call landscape architectural services that would really be of great assistance to execute all of these different elements. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank, thank you very much for the presentation. At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to speak on this topic, now would be the time, if you could, please to raise a virtual hand. And again, keeping it to the items that were presented that you just saw a moment ago. And city clerk, if you, and then we will come back to council for discussion, I'm sorry, questions, discussions, and then direction. City clerk, if we can call on the public.
First is Stephen Seymour or Sandra Perez Vargas, just one moment.
Okay, it is Stephen Seymour.
Whenever you're ready, Stephen.
All right, thank you, Melissa. First of all, I'd like to applaud and thank Ann for a great presentation. I would ask her to help design all the city presentations because it was succinct and it wasn't too long. It wasn't overwhelming, but it was very, her ask is very clear. For the Posey Park, first of all, I'd like to also say that I think that the council should look deep in funding all of what she put up there. I think these are the steps that are needed to create an environment that invites the kind of business, businesses that we want on the avenue. And I would hate to see us cut this short because we're talking about history and the future of what our downtown looks like. And we all know, we've been, anyone who's looked here for any length of time at all knows that the public wants to see a more vibrant downtown. So I'd like to say that. I'd also like to say, kind of piggyback on a little bit to what Sandra said earlier. We've been asking for code enforcement and some attention from city for a long time down the avenue. And I really think this is the right time to do it, mix it in. It'll help prepare us for the changes that are coming. I would hate to see the same kind of code violations that exist on the avenue today after we've spent $2 to $5 million to improve the street. It kind of would be for naught. And I really think we have the momentum right now to take some actions that the public's been asking for for eight, nine, 10, 12, 15, 20 years or more. Let's do the simple things on the avenue to prepare for this. And again, I ask the council to consider all of what Ann has proposed at the level five of the last portion of the presentation. And lastly, thank you, Ann, for a great presentation. And I appreciate the council's time in spending, determining what we can do downtown. I would, I think you should think long and hard though about putting up benches, tables and benches, just because the benches invite people to lay on them. It's more of those chair things that need to go up. But I'm sure that the, whoever's designing this will, will be able to lead you the right direction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. We have our final speaker when you're ready, city clerk.
Yes, Nancy Foreman. Just one moment, Nancy, while I bring you in. Hi Nancy, can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Hi, thank you for the presentation, Ann. I just want to ask a question about Posey Park. Is it really necessary to even have the fountains? Looking at the wind in the last couple of days, would the fountains still be able to even be on? I'm not convinced that fountains is the best use of that space. And I did not see an option that did not even activate the fountains. And maybe instead, we just use them as planters. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you for your comments. And I'm not seeing any other speakers, so we will end with the public comments on this topic. And there was a question, which was in regards to the fountain. And obviously, we've had a little wind in San Bruno. And so if that's still viable, or that there was not an option in regards to not having the fountains, staff, have any comments on that?
Yes, it was option three, I believe, that was the option to turn the fountains into planters. And it is a very appropriate point, questioning should we be reactivating the fountains, not just because of the wind, but also because of the drought.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, we have them in, my colleagues, three areas, and maybe we can take each area so we don't keep going all around. Why don't we start with the greening and landscaping? So we'll start with that one for questions on the presentation to staff. So questions, your direction, not your commentary, just any questions on that topic, colleagues. And we have council member Hamilton, please.
So I also want to thank, thank Ann for a great presentation, very, very clear. And thank all staff for working on this and bringing this to us. Everybody knows that this is a, this is a, something near and dear to my heart, and I'm very, very pleased that we're talking about it. One comment that I have on the, on the greening of downtown, that effort to identify appropriate trees for planting. One thing I didn't see in the, in the notes that I think we should take into consideration would be to identify tree species that when they're mature have a high canopy so that we don't obstruct the storefronts. So like, for example, in that, that great picture in front of Grand Leader of the one healthy tree, you can't tell it's a Grand Leader unless you know, because the sign is completely obscured by the healthy tree. And it's not the trees fall, it's just how, that's how it's going to grow when it's in a pot. So the, that's something I think we should, that we should look at, you know, the, the height of, at maturity and how the, how the canopy forms on the particular species that we, that we identify. I'm very, very supportive of the direction to start moving on this for trees. So I'll stop there.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you, staff, thank you, Ann. It was a pleasure meeting you yesterday downtown. I think that was yesterday, Mr. Mayor, was that yesterday, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, and it's great that you're there to see it. It's been a long, long overdue amount of attention has been given to our downtown. Interesting enough, last night at the San Bruno Community Foundation, downtown was the number one item that was brought forward from the community survey that was given of the community's interest in seeing improvement there. Easily hands down, I think it was 280 comments, and the closest one behind it was at least 100 behind. So the interest is there. It's long overdue, and here we are. And the question, it was great, what can we do? I understand that there are some issues with culverts. But the culverts start north of Genovin, mid-block. And so on Genovin, from the stormwater master plan, there are no culverts. So we could easily put trees in the ground there. I totally understand, and, and I'm in favor of hiring a landscape architect on call to address the many needs that are downtown. But in this first part, determining what species, with, with the wind, microclimates, all that, getting, getting a professional to give us some guidance on that is, is most important. So if, as, as we proceed with that and doing the design, I would, I would ask that we have a, something that's called a design build. So as you're working on the design, and you start on the, on the south end as you're working north, without the problems we're going to have with the storm drain, you can pretty much move on those locations and continue doing the design, but getting the things in the ground first. It's a, it's an interesting, interesting word choice, cohesive. Our downtown isn't cohesive. It's eclectic, funky, different eras of architecture. I mean, I would quit using the word cohesive because it doesn't fit our downtown. It is its own eclectic vibe there with, with the variety, with the diversity. But nonetheless, 250,000 in design, I would like to see that broken down a little bit more. But I think we need this landscape architect to be involved with Centennial Plaza for the selection of those plants, of those trees, and in Posey Park. But I don't want to jump too far ahead, so I'll leave those comments there. And once again, thank you for the presentation.
Any other colleagues in regards to the greening and landscaping topic that was brought up? Also, our Mason.
So for the greening and landscaping concept, I was just wondering what, what the cost? Is there like a, a scale of cost that we're looking at as well? And then I wanted to ask, when you're looking at what exactly is going to be planted? I know that one of the issues I've heard has been like a broken pipe of some sort for the pots that are existing. So is there anything that we can do to make sure that the plants are drought tolerant so that the beauty of the plants are not reliant on water? And then are we also looking at the maintenance of whatever it is that we are going to plan? We have been really short-staffed. We don't know if, how long that's going to last. What are, what is staff looking at to ensure that the maintenance is minimal? So we'll start there.
City manager or director, would anyone like to comment on the last questions, please?
All right, we're on you. We'll have Ann Matola take the first part of our time in later.
All right. I want to make sure I have all the questions. One of your first questions
One of your first questions was the overall cost. That's actually one of the, that's within the scope of what we need a landscape architect to help us with. Because again, until we know what we're dealing with, we really can't estimate the cost. So I don't mean to be vague or dodge that, but that's the reality of that situation. As far as, and as far as the drought-tolerant plants, sustainable maintenance, that is another thing that somebody with expertise can come in and help us with from the get-go, from the time it's planting. A lot of times, what you'll do is you'll talk about, these are our resources. This is what we have to be able to maintain as far as staffing resources, and they can help design appropriately. And as far as drought tolerant, that is something that we actually look to implement. Drought tolerant doesn't necessarily mean it needs no water. But once it's established, it's much, it's much less of a burden on the water system. The main, it doesn't necessarily impact maintenance, but it certainly helps with water use. Those are the questions?
No, there was also the, sorry, there was also the broken pipe question?
Well, that's actually, that answers it, the broken pipe. Well, I mean, that would be an additional question that Mayor Medina, I think is a good point, is, is there a cost associated, or are we interested in fixing that pipe? But really, the intention of my other question was just to make sure that it's drought tolerant, whatever it is that we get. But I think that's a good question, because my understanding is that that's one of the reasons there's been a delay.
Just to back on that, I think, connected to that question was Marty's question about the design build. And so the 250,000 is really our best professional guess on what it would cost to do the schematic design. Now, we're going to have to do an R and P and get bids, and so we'll hone in on that number. But right now, this project is not funded, so we're not able to break down the costs. We will once we, we get bids from landscape designers. In regard to the design build, that's another contracting layer, and we would need to add additional funds to the project if we're going to design build, because we wouldn't want to use some of our design money to do installation. So should council want to look at that? I think we, we, we should take that on after we get the architect on board and get a better estimation upon how that relationship will work and exactly how much money we need to add.
So then, on this, in this particular portion of the, I guess, presentation, I'll call it, just so that I'm clear, what is it that you are requesting of us to direct, to direct staff on?
So with regard to greening and landscaping of downtown, should council want us to proceed, we would build in 250,000 into the proposed budget. Do not know at this point where that money will come from. We are currently in the process of our budget development. So I do not know if we'll have general fund money. And so we may be looking for other pots of funds to fund that from, potentially Measure G, potentially other funds. But as we're developing the budget, if this is a priority of council, that is the next step. Just actually put some money behind this project and try and fund it in the 21, 22 budget.
Okay. And just confirming, we don't have any landscape architects in-house, correct, that I know of?
No. We have made this staff.
Okay, great. And, and just a thank you to Director Matola. I know you're fairly new, and you've really jumped into this in a number of meetings I've been on with you. So I really appreciate the quick turnaround on, on some of these requests. And just moving so, so quickly since you got in, so thank you so much.
Okay, next is the Vice Mayor, but Vice Mayor, Councilmember Salazar hasn't had an opportunity. I'd like to call on him next. Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so I just wanted to add my thanks to staff for, for bringing this next step. A while back, and it's been, it's been a while now since we approved the first funding, the streetscape plan. So that was a few years back. And there were concerns back then that, you know, we were going to spend money on the plan, and then it would just sit on a shelf and it would never move anywhere. So I definitely appreciate staff's efforts to sort of keep some momentum behind that. We have the plan in place. And so seeing this come back to us in, in incremental, in incremental format, I think definitely gives us an opportunity to prioritize and look at things that are going to have an immediate impact. And so I don't have any specifics, specific questions about the greening and landscaping, but given all of the other things that we're looking at in this presentation, I would say that this is probably the biggest bang for the buck out of all of these. It's a, you know, a price tag that looks reasonable, something that we could definitely work into a budget. If we could get additional funding from the outside, it would definitely make this very, very doable. And I think it would have a huge, huge impact on, on the appearance of downtown. So out of all of the things that we're looking at, I think this is one that we definitely want to prioritize. So that was it for my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let's go back to Vice Mayor Medina.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I had a couple of other questions that I didn't ask earlier. Of the planters that are currently, I guess, the pots there, how many of them have a functioning irrigation system?
My understanding is, right now, there's only one half-block that doesn't have it. So most of-
And it does, I'm sorry?
Yeah, so most of them are working.
And the ones, the ones that are not working, they're not working because of a blockage? Because of a leak? Or do we have an assessment of how long that block is? And what's the cause of it?
I don't know that they've determined it yet. So my understanding is there's, the team that works downtown has been trying all the different plantings. They've also been, they've prepared much of the irrigation. So a lot of the issues were, there were leaks, breakages. And I don't know that they've determined if this is not repairable, or if they just haven't gotten to it yet, I can find out.
That would, that would be great to, to hear back on that. And that would definitely be important for our, our landscape architect to, to review. And I also wanted to thank Council, Councilmember Linda Mason, not, not just staff, because it's my understanding, we wouldn't be talking about it today. This is Measure K funding that Linda was really pushing hard for. And we had a first study session, and this is the follow-up on that. So wanted to thank Linda for that, thank the council for their attention. But my last question, though, is, in the potential funding sources, the, the amount in our development impact fees that we could use, those are one source. And have, have, how do we ask the San Bruno Community Foundation to, to move forward with a strategic initiative for a grant to do what has been identified in their survey as what our community wants?
I don't know, staff has, are you, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, are you concluded?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it of like, what, what are the potential funding sources? And I think it's development impact fees, we, we could, we could use those. And I'm not sure how much we have in there. Not very much, but we have a little bit. I thought, I thought that from 111 San Bruno Avenue, we had $3 million. And how creative could we get if it's, if it's somewhat artistic? And, well, we'll get to Posey Park later, but, but I'll, I'll leave it at that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And, and City Manager, when you respond to that, maybe we can be very clear. I don't want to mislead, or not mislead, but just, there are no Measure K funds that are assigned for this. As the City Manager said, just so people think like, okay, well, it's paid for, so what are we waiting on? So it is about developing the budget, bringing it forward, finding the revenue source. It's for 250,000 at this time. But City Manager, as you're answering the Vice Mayor, I just want to be clear, for that 250,000, let's say council, which it seems we're all together on this, moving that forward, what does that mean after the 250,000 is spent? What will people see or not see?
There's a lot there, let, let's try and unpack it. First question is, can we make an ask of the Community Foundation to fund a portion of this? Certainly, staff can have those conversations. My understanding on the timing of where we're at right now, that would be off-cycle. The Councilmember Medina is correct that they did have a town hall just yesterday on their long-term strategic plan. And they reported on that, number one, was improving downtown. So pivoting and, and looking at a strategic grant to fund a portion of this effort is something that we can have conversations with them about. With regard to the $3 million for 111 San Bruno, that is not development impact fees, that is parking loop fees that cannot be used for downtown, that may potentially be able to be used for Posey Park and Centennial Plaza? Question mark, we're still looking into that. With regards to other development impact fees, it is unclear right now if we have development impact fee revenue that can be used for greening and improving the streetscape downtown. I know that that question is out there, I'm just not at a point where I can give you an answer on, are there development impact fees to use for, for those funds? But based on council direction, we will forthrightly go about and try and fund this effort, or these efforts, should we, should we receive council direction to do so? Lastly, with regard to what will $250,000 provide? That is our best estimate on what it would cost to do the professional design work, coming from conceptual to schematic, a block-by-block design, looking at everything that Ann talked about, what type of plants, looking at the infrastructure, looking at exactly where, how large, et cetera. It was also brought up by Councilmember Medina to do a design build. Because staff is listening, they have reminded me that we cannot do a design build, design build by state law for, for public projects over $1 million. And so we likely will have to follow the normal process where you design, you have a specific design that you didn't bid out, and you give that to a contractor to do. And I know that that means that this will go a lot slower than we all want it to go. Right? Because we all wanted to put trees in the ground and make downtown beautiful yesterday. We will absolutely work as fast as we can. And, but I, I think we all agree, and we've talked about it, designing it and having the right plan is important for the long run. So the trees grow to the right height, and they're the right species, and the canopy is the right height, and they're drought tolerant, and need some water, and they would maintain them, and they survive. And so that's what we're talking about, is taking that, that appropriate next step to go on the block-by-block level design. And then totally understand council wants improvements as soon as possible. And so we will have a conversation with the designer about where can we begin once we know what the design is.
I think you've got them all, all those addressed in that, in your reply, thank you. So what I'm hearing from all of us, and I'm going to talk in the third person, including myself, but that we are all in favor of the $250,000 as has been proposed in outline for the greening and landscaping. Do I, do I have that correct, colleagues? Yes, yes, yes. Vice Mayor.
Just wanted to clarify, Mr. Mayor. So we have, this is a, this is of the $250,000 Measure K request. This is what started it all, right? It was, 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 my understanding, that's what started this all, was Linda's request to pursue Measure K funding. And then we were told, we had, yeah, and we were told there's around 250,000. So if, if we're going to say all that Measure K funding is to do the greening, okay, but we're going to have to find money for everything else that we're going to talk about in Centennial Plaza and Posey Park. Is that correct?
So let's let the City Manager clarify, if that's okay?
Yeah, so let's clarify. Councilmember Linda Mason had a council, began with a council member comment to improve Posey Park. Council supported that. The concept was develop plans to improve Posey Park, so there could be a request to the county and our county supervisors for Measure K funding for Posey Park. We are through the action tonight, coming back to you with what staff has found and options for improving Posey Park. Based on where you decide, we can then make a formal ask for funding for Measure K for Posey Park. The 250K is a separate effort to identify, to hire a landscape architect to design a greening and landscaping plan for downtown, schematic, block-by-block design. We need to find funding for that. And we've talked about the foundation, we've talked about other pots of money that the city may have for that. So it, it's also worth noting that Posey Park came up because of the request from Councilmember Mason. We combined this study session to talk about the next level of the streetscape plan, because we've been talking about that through your council retreat, it's a strategic initiative. The council has stated that we really want to make progress on that. We did not make progress on that in 2020 due to COVID and funding and, 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 and other things. So we wanted to use this opportunity to come to you and say, okay, well, we have the streetscape plan, we know it's conceptual, what can we do next year? Right? It's a, it's a, I think, over a $5 million, a $10 million effort to improve the entire streetscape. We don't have $10 million, but what can we do next year? And that's began with the greening and landscaping plan. The other item of making improvements to Centennial Plaza is coming to you, because that is a, developed as a staff initiative. As we're walking downtown, as we see that there needs to be improvements to Centennial, we're talking to businesses that would like some outside dining. And we began to have conversations with some of our landscape vendors saying, if we had funds, what could we do to make an immediate improvement to Centennial Plaza? And that's why you have that within this study session today. And so we, we decided to use the time to talk about all three items.
Okay. Vice Mayor, does that answer that? And then you had a follow-up question?
Right, I'm, I'm really glad I got that clarification. So thank you for that, City Manager. So I guess I'm, I could wait till we get to Posey Park? So we'll go ahead, I think we should find $250,000 in our budget to proceed with this landscaping plan, landscaping plan, so.
Okay.
I'm satisfied, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to Councilmember Mason, but I have seen a verbal or head nodding, a thumb up, all five of us in concurrence. Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Vice Mayor Medina for his kind words. But I, I do agree with City Manager Grogan that it started with a Posey Park, and the conversation expanded from there, so just for the record. But it was Vice Mayor Medina, I think, who definitely, since even before I was on the council, has really been pushing for the greening of downtown. So I am hoping that we're going to be able to find a way to make all three of these possible sooner rather than later. One thing I do want to ask for is a commitment from the manager, or the City Manager, that we have an update on where we are with this in three months. So if the landscape architect has not been actually procured and gotten within three months, then that you have to come back to council again to let us know. Because we, I do want to make sure that these are, that this particular request is moving forward as quickly as possible.
And thank you for your comments. City Manager, I know, I think you're saying you would work it into the budget. We don't vote on the budget until June, you have to find the money there. So in essence, we're in April, so May, June, then it hits July, when the budget goes into effect July 1st. So in essence, he probably won't, my assumption, City Manager will verify, would not have, be prepared by July to say, already, I think I could say today, it would not be prepared by July. But maybe I'm incorrect, City Manager.
We will not be able to enter into contract until there's funding. As we sit right now, if we're able to fund it with city funds, that will come to you in the proposed budget, you will take action in June, and the, the money will be available July 1st. And then we can identify and enter into contract with the vendor. Should we be able to get funding sooner from somewhere else? Uh, should we be able to get funding sooner from somewhere else, we may be able to do that. Uh, do, do it sooner if the money becomes available sooner. Our, our normal process when we reach out to vendors is actually to have a funded project. Um, right now, we've been talking to a lot of vendors, getting sort of, what, what this costs. But if we're gonna ask for formal bids, we, we really need to have a, a funded project because they're gonna do work to, to, to develop bids for us and we need to know that we have the money uh to move forward. Uh, with regard to reporting back on progress, um, I do think that that is something, this, everything that we're talking about here is a strategic initiative of the city council and I, I do think that that's an appropriate conversation that we can have at our Saturday retreat.
A- a- as well as I think in the strategic initiatives, we also talked about twice a year or about there, those are discussions, to have the initiative updates, right? Where are we at? How much percentage are we, twenty-five percent through fifty percent? Just so we have some way to gauge it, and there's a lot of them, so some, some kind of update, I think, is what the council had, had dialogued about. Uh, then just once a year, but we see it, uh, you know, maybe at least twice. Um, okay, so once again, I'm gonna reaffirm that on the greenery and landscaping, it is all five of us, they're saying uh, first, thank you to the director for her presentation and uh feed, uh, getting feedback from us, we appreciate it, and so is to, direction is to go ahead with that. City manager, do you have the direction needed and, and for that?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
I said yes, um, and when you're ready, we uh should do Centennial and then both.
I, I've got that down, sir. So we're gonna move on to the second item that, in the presentation that came up, which was uh Centennial Park. As a reminder, uh, as you saw, some of the visuals, and it was for eighty thousand. And um, the, really quick, the one thing is, uh, I know you talked about the time capsule. Um, as you, as folks all may know, it's, if you looked at it, um, it's a way ahead of schedule to be uh opened at this time. But it ha- has, have staff reached out to Rotary um just to see, since they kind of, you know, facilitated that, funded that, has anybody reached out to them just to see what their thought is, or, or are you waiting for us for direction?
We're waiting for, for the city council to, uh, for direction, uh, but we would certainly contact Rotary uh, and as we uh move forward with the design, come up with an appropriate plan.
Perfect, thank you. All right, uh, colleagues, uh, on Centennial Park. Um, questions? Clarifying? If not, direction. For Medina.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um. Centennial Plaza has been um almost every time I walk past it is, 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 has seen its best days years and years ago. And um, I'm glad, I'm glad we're, we're looking at something there. Um, for this eighty thousand, where is this eighty thousand coming from? Maybe we start there, are we talking about after we, we set the budget to figure out where to go? Um, I, I'm sorry for that, I didn't really catch that, we have the funds for it?
So the proposed next steps is that we would strike identified funding uh in, in the twenty twenty-one budget of eighty thousand dollars. And so we, um, if we have sufficient general fund dollars, uh, we will propose general fund, uh, or we will look at other, other pots of money. Uh, one idea that we brought up tonight that we uh aren't looking into is using the park and loop funds. This is, so currently, this is not a park, uh, it is a uh close-off area and uh I'm not sure that we will be able to use those funds, uh, but we are, we are looking into the, uh, the exact verbiage of, um of, of the park and loop fund as well as uh the documents surrounding what Centennial Plaza uh was created and uh the bank was purchased and abolished and, and, and this plaza developed.
Got it, and, and um, Mr. Mayor, the this is a temporary of the temporary solution that, that we have there, right? So is that staff's proposal, that this is just a temporary thing?
Oh.
Yeah.
And I, let me, let me, let me, let me, sorry for asking a question and interrupting so fast, but in the streetscape plan, um, there was a little bit more elaborate, and so uh they were talking about have a stage and additional seating, and it was really gonna be um a a programmable space, like a really, and when I look, when I think of that, I would think of, of potentially having Shakespeare in our downtown on, on a little stage, or maybe having some people play music um, on, on, on that stage, so um I'm okay with the, the shorter term because it's just dreadful there right now. But um, just kind of wanted to, to, to hear staff's kind of views on, on how far we're going with this.
So this was intended to be a quick win project to activate that area, open it up for both planned outdoor dining, should one of the local restaurants like to utilize that space, but also have tables for where people can take their, uh, take out and, and do outdoor dining there. We were really looking for a quick win project, sort of something that we could do. But the plan is to do it nice enough where it can stand the time and, and that could be Centennial Plaza. Should we ever have funds and want to reinvisit it? Absolutely, the streetscape plan included things like that, and we can, we can look at um having any more program space there. Um, but what, actually, why don't I turn it over to the director for her additional thoughts?
Yeah, so um, I think, I think it was really important to all of us, especially being downtown now, getting to know some of the people that are actually working here, the opportunity to have a robust beginning quick win, uh, it's really important, and you can tell it's really important to the community. There is, um, in the streetscape plan, I've been looking at the different options, and it was really a lovely activated urban park. Um, the issue is that the excavator's, your significant work, it's a very costly proposition to be able to transform it to the vision in the streetscape is excavation of um foundation that remains there from the building that was, that was raised, and so there's the cost difference to wait until we can do, the execution to that plan is rather substantial. So I think when you have the park and it's activated and it's used, it actually, it will, um, it, again, it, it is a temporary fix. What we're, what we're putting there is, is a, is no hardscape, so it's actually easily removed should funding become available for us to do the greater, more, more permanent vision of the park.
What, do we have any rough estimates on, on, on putting a fully activated uh Centennial Plaza?
No, staff has not done any of that work to estimate, but what I would tell you at a high level, the professionally designed and executed downtown plazas are in the millions.
Yeah.
It's not a five hundred thousand dollar project, they're often one to five million dollar projects.
But that wasn't identified in our streetscape plan, it's a one or five million dollar project, right?
The streetscape plan was roughly a twenty million dollar plan. Um, if memory serves me correctly, it was almost ten million for apartment plazas and ten million for the streetscapes. I'm not sure that it was a granular breakdown on what was Centennial.
Okay, um I'm in favor of, of some activation there, um, but we um for eighty thousand, and, and, and I'm hesitating because I'm thinking about our downtown, I've been thinking about it a lot. Um, and I appreciate all the effort here, it's way more than was been done for years, so, so I sincerely thank everybody for that. Um when I was, first elected, I was put on a downtown improvement committee and we met one time. Uh, we'd had one council meeting, uh, a walk-through downtown. And I think that was it. So I, I really think we need to reform a downtown improvement uh subcommittee. Um, we did it for the rec center. Uh, we need to be able to kind of track these things, provide our input. Um, I understand staff really busy, these subcommittees don't have to meet with staff all the time. But um, I think it's that important. And clearly from this survey, it's what's on people's minds. And, and the, I think the council should be more involved with that. So maybe later on in the meeting, but I just wanted to bring it up now because I didn't wanna save it to the end, but I think we need to have a downtown improvement committee and not just looking at the greening, but looking at the murals and looking at the lights, and I understand, yeah, we don't have money for all that. But the, but the little, the smaller things that we can do that, that we need to be talking about it, and I love that we're talking about it tonight, so, so please don't take this in the wrong way. Um, but I think, I think our, our community really, really wants to see us do something there and, and the council needs to be more involved, so Mr. Mayor, um, at some point tonight, I, I, I hope that you can consider my request to have a, a subcommittee. I'd be happy to serve on it, but I don't need to serve on it, I'm just, I just want it, want us to do it. And I want us to be more involved, and I wanna see more things done there, and I understand it costs more money, but um, we need, we need to prioritize that and our community wants it.
And what I would probably say, the city attorney will say, we can't uh fo- uh form or appoint anything tonight, it was not on the agenda. Uh, and then Vice Mayor, maybe I need to, we can, we can talk and walk, uh, just as far as, are we talking about these topics? Are we talking about subsequent topics? Just so, because I know staff will say, well, all five of you gave direction, but now two of you are saying, oh, hold on.
No, no, I get, I get that, yes, sir, you're absolutely right. We, we, we can agendize the actual scope of the improvement, uh, downtown improvement.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, committee.
What your thoughts are, yeah.
Yes, sir, okay, I'm good, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Marty, and then uh we can circle back with the city manager, um, council member Mason.
Thank you. Um, so I guess I wanna compare this, if I can, to Florida Park. Um, is it fair to say that my interpretation is right, you're, there's no request here for funding to get uh consultants to create a new plan, this is really a request for direction to say this is how much money we think we can minimally do something to open the park up and make it usable. Um, and I think if that's what staff is asking for, then I definitely support it because we see the vast difference of Florida Park before and after uh our own staff got involved and, um, and assisted in beautifying it. So I just wanna make sure that that's accurate.
Yes, uh, council member Mason, this is intended to be a quick win uh, and we would employ the services of a uh landscape contractor that can uh do the work with minimal direction because we're, we're not, we're talking about planning and, and uh decomposed granite walkways and some sort of a court table, table, so really, really quick win effort uh without sort of the, the large-scale uh the, design build aspect.
Okay, and I, I would say, given the cost, if, I, I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head whether Florida Park went to budget last year or not, but um, if it's something that can be done even sooner than the budget cycle, uh, I would highly encourage and support that. Thank you.
Uh, council member Hamilton, then council member Salazar.
Um, okay, so I, I am also supportive of, of this, this is uh, this is a, a great um interim uh, long-term interim, I guess is a good way to put it, uh, solution for this space. Um, I would like to see us, you know, down the, down the road, um, come back to do a more uh permanent, grander plan uh, once we have funding for it, but this is, this is exactly the right thing to do now. Um, one, uh, one point I wanna bring up, and I purposely waited until after, uh, after um council member Mason went, because I thought she would bring this up, um, is can we make a plan for the holiday tree? You know, we're not gonna be able to have a tree lighting in the park.
That's next, that's next.
Well, because, uh, and so I was wondering if, if putting a tree in, a holiday tree in Centennial Park as a, as a ren- interim would be a, I, I think that would be a good place for it because it's right in the middle of downtown, you would see it when you're coming down Genovin. Um, and it, it, that's something I think um we might wanna consider for to, to build into the design, and it would only be obviously just for, just for a few years um, while we uh, while the rack is being constructed. Um, the only other point is, and I know I'm really getting into the weeds, but this is the, we're talking about, we're talking about it. As part of the work, I would hope that we also be able to find a better solution for maintaining the water level in the fountain than what is there today, because that's not good and a little embarrassing. So um, those are my, those are my comments. I'm definitely supportive of this.
Council member Salazar.
Thank you, uh, you know, so, so my concern every time we talk about Centennial Plaza is um just, you know, what is the longer-term vision for that section of downtown? And when that building was acquired many, many, many years ago, I don't think it was ever intended to be preserved as a public space. It was sort of a, an interim step, it was purchased with redevelopment funds and intended to be at some time possibly packaged into a bigger project. And I think there's still potential there where we may wanna consider, um, as we redevelop downtown uh, to, to package that lot into a, a bigger, uh, bigger development, a bigger project. Um, and whether that's gonna end up being an entry to a downtown parking garage or, you know, part of a a, a new development like we've seen at, at both of the anchor points. Um, I, I think that we have to consider that as uh still the longer-term potential for this property and what we intend to do with downtown. Um, as a public space, I think strategically, it's, it's in a good location, and so that is the direction we decide to go in. I don't think it would necessarily be a bad decision, but I don't know if it necessarily plays in with that broader vision that we have for developing downtown and having a little pocket park in the middle of all that uh may not be uh the best use of it, so um, it, it sounded, uh, you know, I, I heard the, the response to, to Marty's questions, and it sounds like this is uh definitely gonna be designed as a, as a temporary, uh, easily removed thing so that when, if and when those other plans do materialize, we'll be able to, to reprogram that and, and put it back into something that's more useful at eighty thousand dollars, it's um definitely a good investment in making that area uh look nice in the interim. I know that the uh, the, the current, uh, the current setup there was done um practically at no cost uh done by uh city staff, uh, very minimal cost because it was an empty lot that the city owned, and so it was, it was beautified and uh looked really nice at first, it's definitely gotten a little uh shabby over time. And so maybe a, an investment to just kind of keep it going in the interim um would, would be a good infusion there, but again, I, I think we have to, we have to consider that, you know, the, the long-term use of that was never really intended for that, and i- if we do start talking about more permanent plans that we are then um impacting that other, the other vision that was kind of the original vision for that area.
Yeah, and uh, council member Salazar is right on the history, it was Wells Fargo, city purchased it to have skin in the game to be uh, for my time, but it was to say, hey, we're part of San Mateo Avenue. So let's, let's be on it together. Then, as it was said, uh, the Wells Fargo facility came down, the foundation still remains, so you would have to go underneath for something of more permanency. Um, and that, and council member Salazar is correct, that was done with city staff, no consultants, no outside architects or design, and it was done with stuff, items, whether it was the fountain, trees and vegetation that we already had in-house. So it was done very nominally because what it was, was a high chain link fence that uh got the newspapers against it with the winds and the weeds on the other side of the fence. So that's what it was uh for a time, and so this was supposed to be temporary. And so it is from redevelopment, is how we acquired it. And I know sometimes my understanding could be incorrect, but there are some rules as far as it being open space, and that I don't know if we could erect the building, but they talked about using it as a, a drive-through into the back parking or to, um, as the council member said, uh, to have something more long-term. Um, and I see uh Vice Mayor Medina and then council member Hamilton. Switch.
Sorry, I just got a call, but I had a, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I mean, that's really, really important, I think I s- I think at some point we need to have that discussion of of what legally we, we are bound to, to do with that property, with it being purchased with those funds. So maybe, when do we, when do we have that discussion? And 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 what are we going to do with that property in the long term? And maybe that's another discussion to have. I'll leave that with the city manager. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
So I should have, I should have framed my statement about the holiday tree more of as a question, which is, is it, it, would it be feasible to do a, it would obviously, you know, likely be an artificial tree because we would want to use it for, for three to four years while the rack is being constructed. Would it be feasible to display a holiday tree in, in Centennial Plaza? Just while we're, just while the, the, the park is under construction and we likely wouldn't do a tree lighting in the park?
Yes. Should I respond to that?
Yes.
So we will actually look into the cost for that and bring it back. That's a really ideal location.
Thank you.
And sorry, I didn't realize I was on mute when I'm telling you, please respond. Vice Mayor Medina.
Yeah, I, I wanted to express my support for that. Of course, it always comes down to money. But we got to have a, a tree lighting somewhere and 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 having it downtown would be nice for a change. Right?
Okay.
We got, thank you.
Well, yeah, well, it's not going to be on, but so what I'm hearing and I want to reaffirm that for the eighty thousand, as kind of was outlined in that diagram, is that there is concurrence. Mr. Hamilton concurs. And I want you to please stop me and correct me. Councilmember Mason concurs, Councilmember Salazar, Vice Mayor Medina, I'll concur. Okay, I've gotten acknowledgements and favorable from all five. Let's move on to the final of the three, Posey Park. And as you know, folks, as a reminder, it had from various options from eighty five thousand up to two million. Talk about what to ask for for Christmas and boy, there is a range of of costs. So I think we, you had saw kind of the various options. Would the option ideas be best to be brought back up on the shared screen for everybody to see them again? Could we please bring up the share of the screen and have the five options so everybody can see those? Would help us too, I think, to keep on. Thank you. And I think everybody knew fi- option five is the two million, which was quite substantial. So with that, questions, comments? Uh, Councilmember Mason. You're on mute.
So thanks for putting this together again. Our city manager has probably been hearing about this all year on our one on one. So thank you, Jevon. I, I guess I wanted to say that I like number four. I'm really unclear as to why a fountain was built at all. I think just about every city is going away from fountains. So I think we need an option that doesn't include a fountain. The landscaping we need, obviously. And then the, I really like four because it has the expanded mural option. And given that we have, and I, I don't know the limitations on this, but I think between a tentative measure K request that, that I confirmed today is still an option on the table, in addition to the funds that the Arts and Culture Committee has, which I'm not saying it would be all their funds, but maybe for, to fund a mural. I definitely think we have some viable options. And then I also wanted to throw in there that Councilmember Hamilton and I were walking this weekend and that's how the holiday tree idea came up. And I was actually going to mention it for this park. I've gone back and forth with Centennial Park, but the reason that I, I would like to highlight it and, you know, I spoke with city manager Grogan about this last year during COVID, thinking maybe people can come outside with their masks on. But it was, the pandemic, I think, was just too heightened at the time. But the, the reason I like Posey Park for it is because I'll never forget what a commissioner told me from another city, which was that when they get on Caltrain, they pass San Bruno. And they said, Linda, you got, you got to give us something to stop for. And San Bruno's got to give us something to stop for. And the idea of having a lit tree and maybe even a lighting ceremony with some vendors, with some hot chocolate, it really could liven up the, really what's the beginning of our downtown, beginning or end, depending on what side you're, you're seeing it. So I have already submitted that request as part of our strategic planning for Saturday. So I don't want to be here too much, but I would support option four and either for, for a holiday tree. But I do like this one just because of the Caltrain passing by here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. You know, actually, you know, out of, out of all of them, it, it really seems like maybe five would, would be the one to shoot for if we're, if we really want to, you know, do something with that area. I, I agree with Linda that a fountain was probably a bad idea when we decided to do it in the first place. And so spending money on, you know, waterproofing and restoring what, what's going to be a fountain doesn't seem like a good investment of money to me. And it sounds like any of these options are going to require us basically to put, basically throwing good money after bad by trying to repair what's, what's there. So I, I really don't like that idea of having to, you know, sort of continue building on that, on a, on a poor design that, that was, that was put in place. So, you know, I, I, I think if we're going to do it, we should do it right. I, I think trying to fix what's there is only going to end up looking kind of half baked. Definitely don't want to do another fountain there. If we do the planning and we have to break up what's there, it seems like, you know, we're, we're halfway toward this other thing. So I, I realize that the two million dollars is probably well beyond what we had, you know, initially started scoping and it puts us into a whole different ballgame. But, you know, I, I'm, I'm not crazy about any of those other options.
Councilmember Hamilton.
So one question, and I may have known this at one point, and I apologize. So was this, the, the fountains and the current design of the park designed and built solely by the city of San Bruno or in partnership with Caltrain as part of the Caltrain station? Let's start with that question, if that's okay.
Unfortunately, the, the staff members that are here do not have the history to answer that definitively. With all the research that we've done and seeing the various designs that have, that came forward to the city and options presented to the city council, I think the best answer that I could give you is that it was in partnership. Because I know in looking at prior staff reports and draft versions that we have, that there were several models that were talked about and reviewed internal.
And, and Mr., I'm sorry, Councilmember Hamilton, I'm going to go off memory and that's never a wise thing, so keep it with that. Is for all, all council, there was going to be two fountains, first of all. So council said, let's, let's just do one. There was going to be one on the, on the east side. So, so look at the bright side, there's one fountain, not two. And my understanding is for the great separation, most, all of it was funded through grants that were, I think, up to two thousand and fourteen, there was over a hundred million that was paid for, the city very, paid almost nothing. The only thing it was going to go in partnership was the arch, which became astronomical from five hundred to a million that they wanted from the city and then from their part. And we said, stop. So then when the punch list was achieved, then it was being turned over to city to maintain. That's my memory, but Councilmember Salazar may be, may remember as well, so.
So I remember.
Councilmember Hamilton, just wanted to give you a little.
So, oh, I'm sorry, I, I thought you were going to speak, Councilmember Salazar, but you're, you're concurring with what Rico is saying.
Correct, yeah, that's exactly how I remember it.
Cool, thank you. Because the reason that I ask is that, you know, with the, the problems that are happening in the fountain, that, that's not very long. It's not, it's not that old, considering that this was a, you know, a municipal structure that was, that was built. And I, I'm just wondering if there's any, we have any legal resource, recourse to go back to Caltrain for some help on taking care of this problem financially. And I, I, I don't know if that's anything that we've looked at or considered or, or whatever. But because obviously that would, that would change the, the conversation on what options we should look at going forward.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to chime in on that.
I was waiting for you to.
I was looking at your box there, Mr. City Attorney.
City Attorney.
Sure, so some council members may recall that this was the subject of very lengthy and difficult negotiations between the city and the Joint Powers Board that spanned, I would say, a variety of years, several years. We, we went into mediation with a professional mediator over a, a, a lot of issues having to do with the construction of, of the park, including defects, punch list, things that should have been completed but weren't and so on and so forth, and, and the arch. So the, the result of, of that was a settlement agreement many years ago that resolved all the claims in, in exchange for a variety of concessions that the JPB made. But the bottom line is there's no opportunity now for additional recourse against Caltrain or JPB with respect to the, the park. Okay, so, so I, I, I don't imagine that the, the, the structural problems that we're seeing in the fountain were on, were on that punch list. Because we didn't know about it then, this, this is something that failed years later. But you're saying that the settlement that we entered into said, basically said, that park is yours and we're not, we're never going to worry about it again, and we agreed to that. Right. It, it actually, the, there, some of the problems with Fountain were, were evident even at that time as a result of the construction. And I don't have, while I don't have the settlement agreement in front of me and can't recall all of the, all the details, it was quite a while ago. In any event, it resolved all of the city's claims about both what was known at that time and also any unknown claims that, that might have already accrued as is common for basically all settlement agreements. Okay, I will stop beating that dead horse. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, so then, lo- looking at the, the options there, I'm also not in favor of a fountain. I think I agree with, with a lot of, with, with everything that both Councilmember Mason and Councilmember Salazar said about the fountain. And I also think that having a large, a large water feature running in the, sends the wrong message, given our propensity for drought, that, that's not going to go away. So I, I also agree with our, with Councilmember Salazar that option five would be the best thing, it would be the best final outcome. What I worry about, though, if approving option five is that because there isn't a pot of two million dollars laying around to, to fund that, that nothing would happen in the, in the short or even medium term. So I guess my question is, I know a lot of what's in option four is in option five or vice versa. And is there a, is there a way to proceed with option four while still keeping option five on the table as a long term goal?
Sure. So a, a few things there. Before answering, I think as we're pointing out that option four, option four can include no fountain and only landscaping and murals. And so just want to point that out. Is there a way to proceed with option four and still proceed with option five? Unfortunately, not, because it would essentially be a waste of funds to do the restoration of the fountain and the waterproofing, where option five is really re-envisioning the entire plaza, which may be a moot conclusion of that. And so the, I think the best way to break up the options is one through four is reusing the existing infrastructure in some fashion, fountain or no fountain. Option five is a complete revisioning that will begin with a park designer, landscape architect.
Okay, thank you. So given, given all of that, I think the, the, I would be in favor at this time of going with option four. Just because I don't, I, I think with everything else and all the various priorities happening, that option five would end up on the shelf for, for, for quite a while. So that's my, that's my thought.
Uh, any other questions or comments from colleagues?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to raise my hand. Clearly, and I agree with all the council members about, there's no point of a fountain there anymore. And my suggestion is that, that as we revise option four and that cost would go down in option four, if, if we're, we're not going to restore the structure. And this is the opportunity where a landscape architect could really help us. I believe I heard there was eighteen inches of, of depth. And a, a landscape architect could tell us what plants would thrive there. I'm guessing some of the succulent type that really don't have extensive roots. And they really don't take up much water either. And I think they really do well here in San Bruno. So how, how to get some information from that procured service? Murals could also be attached. It does not be painted on, on the, on the actual wall. It could, it could be on wood or other media and then adhered to the, or bolted to the walls there just so that it doesn't look so bland and, and so nasty. So and then when it comes down to, to option five, yeah, that's, that's always the great thing to ha- to have a brand new park with all those great bells and whistles. But we, we have a serious financial, uh, difficulty doing a lot of things. So if we can get grants, of course, yeah. And, and how much, and then again, where's that money going to come from? Grants could pay so much and we need to put our part. And our city has so many needs. I, I think staff could come back with some refinement on, on those costs and, and it's, it's good to have big dreams, but we don't have the money for them right now. You know, there's, there's another twenty million across our downtown that we don't have. But I do love, love the possibility of putting something down there for Christmas. And I'll go ahead and add this. When people are coming off the train, it's not just there that they're looking down, you know? As you're looking across, there's a number of issues there that need additional cleanup and code enforcement that, that has been going on for way too long. You know, we've had a contractor utilizing the former Hamlin Tire as, as a, as a, as a yard. So I, I, I'm strained, thank you very much for that. So Posey Park, yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
I saw a four, and then Councilmember Salazar.
I, I just wanted to, to rebut some of what Marty just said because we don't have money for any of these options, to be honest. None of these are funded. And so we're talking about what direction do we want to take on this? And so we're going to be looking for funding to do any of these. And if we actually go with the more ambitious option five, which would actually turn this into somewhat of a park with usable recreation area, that actually opens up those park and loo funds to us, which wouldn't be the case with any of the other options. So, you know, if, if, we're, we're just talking about, you know, scrambling to get half a million and only, you know, putting a, a coat of paint and some plants in, in, in a broken fountain, then I don't think that's a good use of our money. And if we're going to go out and try to find the funds anyway, let's look at actually putting something usable here. And maybe we could just ignore the fountain for now, fix it so that it's presentable and really start focusing on what's happening in front of that fountain, which is the area that could be usable. which is the area that could be usable. Used to be a park there. Uh, now there's no grass or anything, well, except for that little mound. Uh, but, you know, maybe focus on, on doing something there and then coming back to uh repairing the fountain area um as downtown starts evolving and more funds become available from that development.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Salazar, we're really not too far off. You're not, you're not rebutting anything. We don't have the money. So, I do agree with you that if we were to get the money, that would be great. Is this a park? First of all, let's, let's clarify. Posey Park in the day wasn't much of a park at all. It was just a little bit of grass with a couple trees. Um, and then when we went ahead and, and realigned uh Semitale Avenue, we split it, and uh we had to cut those beautiful trees down, but it wasn't really much of a, a park ever. Um, but, uh, let me ask staff, is Posey Park a real park in, in, in our city's eyes?
Um, is, is, City Manager did have this hand up probably for prior conversation, and maybe he can also answer that uh as he speaks.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Medina. I, I rolled my hand uh with regard to uh Councilmember Salazar's comment, and, and um, I think it'll address Marty's as well. Improvements to Posey Park are currently not funded. What we're talking about is this defining an option and identifying funding. One potential funding source for Posey Park, which is a park, is our park and loo fund that does have $3 million in it. And so, we could potentially fund some, if not all, of these options, if that, if that is where we wanted to direct those funds. Now, there are other needs, as we know, across the city for those park and loo funds. And we could spend $3 million like that uh on various uh other, other parks. And we had been identifying a significant amount of those park and loo funds to help out with the Aquatic and Rec Center. Now that we've actually had the bid opening for the park and rec, and uh the new park and rec center, and we received the bid pricing that does open up those park and loo funds that we were already reserving a million dollars out of in our, in our budget estimations for other parks citywide to go towards Posey Park or other areas. So, it's really a council policy decision. When we talked about the challenges with using the park and loo funds earlier, I wanna be clear, that was on Centennial Plaza. Because Centennial Plaza right now is not a technical park. It is a temporary plaza uh from a former redevelopment parcel, and it's essentially a holding place because we have been, uh, we, we did a temporary installation there, and it's not, it has not been old. That is not a park by city definition. Posey Park, however, is a park. And so, one option that is available to the city council is to carve out um the, the $500,000 for option four, or any of the other options, and, and, and we can look to fund those through the budget process. In addition, this works clarifying, I think, a comment that Councilmember Medina made, uh, and, and that we can revise a $500,000 figure. We do not do a water feature. The $85,000 for restoration of the surface and waterproofing is needed whether we do planning or a fountain. Because the, the, the plants actually have to drink too. So, we would need to repair the concrete, the exposed rebar, waterproofing, whether we were reactivating the fountain or doing plants. And so, we do think option four is approximately half a million dollars. And of course, as we bring on it, uh, the, the landscape uh, uh, architect and design it, the, the uh, the cost will come more into alignment, but that is our current estimate. I hope that answers the, those questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge and, and thank uh our City Manager for that. Um, that was pretty uh important clarity provided.
Uh, Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I was wondering if you can go back to slide five, option five? So, I'm, I'm wondering why we didn't have a schematic for options um one through four to see what those would compare to?
Great. So, again, remember, this project started with council direction to look into, look into potential improvements in Posey Park. Not funded. These beautiful pictures you see before you came out of the adopted street skate plan, which cost approximately $130,000 in a landscape architect design. What you have on the prior slide is staff investigation and professional guess on what these options will cost. And so, there is no funded project for improvements to Posey right now, uh to, to bring you to the sort of beautiful images you see here.
Okay, so then this uh option five is gonna include, when it says complete renovation, it's gonna, it's, it's gonna be all new concrete?
Think of this as, of option five, sorry, as a re-envisioning of Posey Park. We will enter into contractual services with a park designer. We will have community engagement. We will have input, and we will re-envision what Posey Park is. And it will be intentional placement.
I think, so, I'm not, um, I think what I'm having a hard time grasping is that it's unclear to me what more we're getting for $1.5 million. So, I'd like to better understand, because you're ta- you're, I mean, you're talking about taking money from, like you said, $3 million could go fast. It, Florida Park could have been done by now, right? And so, I, I think that when we're looking at um how we're strategically placing our money, um, I wanna make sure that we have some kind of rhyme or reason to what we're doing, what we're doing, while also finishing projects. I mean, I feel like we're starting a lot of projects and I, and that should not be long-term, and I wanna make sure that we're gonna finish them. So, I think my, I'm having a hard time here grasping what I'm getting for the $2 million that I'm not getting for the $500,000. And I know parks cost a lot of money. That's not lost on me, but it would really help to understand what that difference in cost is.
So, I would, if you could go back to the prior slide again. So, I think what's really important to understand between the difference. Again, all of these use this existing structure. So, no matter what we do, you're going to see the massive wall. When you're at the plaza, it's very interesting. When you take pictures of it, it doesn't seem to have that same, I will say oppressive impact, just when you're there, and it's just this wave of this um beige kind of wall. We're not gonna re-activate the fountain. Here's a whole stepped area, which will end up just being this odd stepped area. We can't make any of this go away. And so, I think it's really important, the expectation that these solutions may soften what's there, but to really transform it. Um, it doesn't do that. It repurposes certain elements by cladding it with public art, by softening in certain areas with plantings, but even the expectation of the plantings that we put there, you're looking at things which are a lower level and still that have the grander of trees. So, if you look at five, what it does is, um, what the street skate attempted to do is really to repurpose that whole area. And when I, as I'm reading it um from the plan view, you can kind of see that the fountain isn't a, isn't a fountain, right? It's this wall. It looks like a living garden in the picture. Um, so it's very green. It's a shaded area. It's a place which is more inviting to gather. It doesn't have the starbness. So, the first four action, options, no matter what we do, it's still gonna be a very um broad apron of a concrete plaza with some cool um treatments and cladding, if you will, to that big concrete structure that's there. So, I really think the expectation we'll spend the money on, it's different. So, we can kind of dress it up. We can soften what's there for up to $500,000, but to truly transform the space where it feels more like a park setting is the higher price tag. I will also add that, you know, so regardless of what we do, I do think, you know, we're moving towards this, let's bring in an expert. Let's bring somebody that knows material use, the species, the plantings. So, they would render a plan. They may be able to render two options. The interesting thing about parks and park funding, if I have a plan, like your park funding that comes up, and you can apply for grants to transform spaces, um, and you can always do what we're trying to do now, cladding it, but I just, I mean, just understanding the way park grants go, you're more attractive candidate if you have a shovel-ready plan or a concept that's ready to go to construction docks. So, the $2 million option gives us the ability to really re-envision it, so it's a usable space. One through four is pretty much just softening a structure that's there, which is no, no longer functional as it's intended use. But you.
No, very, very helpful. Thank you. And for five, then, um, so, I, I don't, I, I missed it, I think, earlier when, until you just said this right now. So, this, if this rendering came right out of this, right out of the street skate plan, then that means that this $2 million is part of the overall budget given to the street skate plan that the council approved. Is that also, is that right then? So, it's not like you're gonna have the, the budget that's in the street skate plan, and then it's gonna be like, oh, this is $2 million, which is more than had been anticipated as part of the plan. This is part of the overall budget and the phasing. Is that right?
Uh, no. So, the street skate plan was not funded. So, there, there is no budget for the street skate plan. The street skate plan was a conceptual document, and if memory serves me correctly, we, we, we hired a firm, WRT, and I think that was like a $130,000 plan. The plan was done. The council accepted the plan. It's a $20 million plan. It was never funded. And so, there's no fun, no identified funding to follow through on implementation. This would be a carve-out of that plan to look at making a new $2 million park ballpark at Posey Park, or reutilizing the existing infrastructure for, um, for, for a modified version of what's there.
Let me, let, so I under, uh, I'm sorry, I don't think you, maybe I wasn't clear on the question. So, I understand that the money is not budgeted, the $20 million, but it was broken down into phases. And so, this slide, if it came out of the street skate plan, then the $20 million should be out of the $20 million that had been estimated. And that's my question. Is this a, a whole separate, to, you know, out of the $20 million, or are we, is this part of that $20 million?
It would be a part of the $20 million. But I, I want to caveat that the it's, it wouldn't necessarily be exactly what was envisioned in the street skate plan, right? The street skate plan was 30,000 feet uh level, and then we would employ the services of a landscape uh designer and park designer to re-envisionate simply a $2 million park.
So, is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Cause I, I, I'm gonna start getting worried if none of these numbers are part of the, the envisioned street skate plan. Um, okay, thank you for answering those questions.
Councilmember Hamilton?
So, um, a lot of my questions were answered by Director Metola's very complete answer to Linda's question. So, um, looking at all this and learning uh about the the, well, the park and loo fund and what we potentially could use and all of that. I, 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 you know, I, I'm, you know, I'm with Councilmember Salazar. I don't like the idea of, you know, dressing up what's he, here, if we can do it correctly. But I also don't like the idea of adopting a plan that can't be funded for, for many years. Um, I don't think we're there. I don't think that's gonna happen, given what's, what's coming in the future. And I would be supportive of option five if we were going to fund it through a combination of things. You know, some of our park and loo fund, some, um, you know, make a, a, application to the county for Measure K funding. Um, maybe, you know, funding from other, from other sources to, and, and to, to bring it all together. That would be, and if, if that's something that's, that's feasible, that we can get s- started on, getting the, getting the, being able to do the, the, the short-term funding to do the design, to make a shovel-ready project that makes it easier to get grants for, so that we're ready to do it, um, I would be supportive of that.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Councilmember Salazar, and then we're gonna go to uh Rico Medina.
Hey, thank you. So, um, you know, and I, I'm, I'm a huge proponent of not taking on projects that we can't finish. That was really my big opposition uh last time we met, uh, about, you know, what option we were gonna choose for the bike lane, because I really felt that going for one that had no identified funding source made no sense. And our, our chances of success were very limited. But as, as Linda, I, I, I think, uh, deduced here through, through her questioning, uh, this is part of a plan that we've already approved. We're committed to this. Um, and, and that, the, what was in the street skate plan is, was what we're talking about now versus trying to do a short, uh, you know, quick win, uh, to use Javon's words, uh, you know, trying to get a quick win out of this. And if it is a quick win that will eventually be torn down to make way for our ultimate vision, then it's not a good use of our monies in the short term. Um, so, you know, if, if we're gonna go ask for Measure K funding, um, and if it's something we could use at Centennial, and it's not something that we can pull out of park and loo, then I think we, we go that route and maybe uh just stay the course on this, look at it long-term. If we make the investment, let's make it in the initial design and start moving that streets, street skate plan forward rather than looking at, at quick, um, you know, shortcuts.
City Manager, you have your, uh, in that room has a hand up. I know, Councilmember Mason, I, I'd like to be able to go ahead uh of Councilmember Mason, if possible, since I haven't had an opportunity yet. Um, City Manager, though, please?
Sure. A couple comments. Um, and I wanna sort of go back a little bit to when this topic first came up. Uh, what I mentioned to council is absolutely we can look into uh ways to quickly reactivate uh or make some improvements to Posey Park, and it was based on Councilmember Linda Mason's conversations with the county under the, the, the sort of guise that there may be somewhere around $200, maybe $300,000 worth of Measure K funding for this. But what I also uh have always talked to council about is, let's not look at things in a vacuum. Because if we are sort of zeroing, zeroing in on option five, because we're thinking, oh, let's fund it with park and loo, I really think that that question really needs to go in context with your capital budget planning discussion, where you're looking at all of your park needs across the city. Because that is our, right now, our only pot of money that we have within our discretion to improve our parks. And the, the needs in our park system far outstrips every dollar in there. And so, I just wanna be clear that we should not uh sort of make a decision to go with option five because we're thinking, oh, there's $3 million in that fund, and then that pulls that out. Uh, because, for example, we applied for a grant uh for Florida Park. If, if we do not get that Florida Park, that grant, and I think Florida Park in Vermont is $2.5 million ballpark, the council may say, you know what? Well, the highest use of that is the $3 million that we have in park and loo. Or we're gonna put some here and some for our other park needs, and we all know those needs. And so, I just wanna remind council that this conversation did begin really with, how can we make some quick improvements to Posey Park? Because there may be the possibility to obtain $200,000 to $300,000 worth of grant funds. That said, absolutely re-envisioning the park as identified in the street skate plan for a $2 million or more park is something that would absolutely be very beautiful and something that we may wanna build down as a city. Um, but I, I just, I, I wanna make it clear that there may or may not be the near-term funding for that, depending on what you decide when you're looking at the totality of the projects and the needs and the funding. It's also worth noting that while it is true that we could potentially obtain grant funds for place-making and making, let's say, a new park, absolutely grants may come up. What's, what's also true is that this is, right now, less of a neighborhood park and more of a and more of a entry plaza for our train station. And, and under that guise, our ability to get transportation funding or, or, uh, grants related to transportation and infrastructure, we typically do not factor highly high on that scale. Because this is not the type of park in a underserved neighborhood that meets the criteria, for example, that we were able to meet with Florida Park. When we looked at the Prop 68 funding, the park grant funding, Florida Park, um, was an area that qualified, but other areas in the city did not qualify. And we would have to sort of, if we're gonna look to fund this through grants, we would have to make sure that it's a park that will be looked at as beneficial or meeting the grant criterias that are out there. Um, and as it's currently configured as more of a entry point to the train station, it may not bear high in, in grant funds. And I know that was a lot, but I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that we understand, the totality of what we're talking about when we're getting into option five. Um, and the timing at which we, we might have the funds to, to fully do that full build-out may not be immediate.
Okay, uh, real quick, cause I do, cause I, I'm gonna assume, um, that's not a good thing to do, but Councilmember, um, Mason and Vice Mayor Medina may have just a follow-up question or, or a comment on that. And then, and I'll, so let me defer to Councilmember Mason and Vice Mayor Medina if we could start to wind this up because I think we've all had a good dialogue. Uh, council member.
Oh, no, you can go ahead, mayor.
No, no, please, please, council member, please.
I, I can't, I can wait.
Can I go then? Were you still waiting for me?
Absolutely, Vice Mayor Medina and then Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and, and so I went back and watched the study session for these 250K. And we had the four options, right? City park improvements, plenty of things there, the library, downtown in general, and then Posey Park. I, I voted along on Posey Park, but my concern was it was gonna cost too much money for $250,000 to do much there, which winds up being pretty much the case. I heard loud and clear what our city manager said. We have millions of dollars in improvements needed at our city parks. All of them could use a little bit more love and money. And we haven't yet even came up to that discussion and heard from the park and rec department, I'm sorry, the park and rec commission, on their recommendations on where, where, where is the need in San Bruno for parks, right? So with, when this opportunity came up, 250,000, yeah, hey, great, let's go ahead and go for it. Well, it's a lot more money than 250,000. It'd be great to have the big plan, but at this point, what are we gonna do? And I think we should focus on that and we don't have the money right now. So, uh, we go back and look at budget, we go back and look at what other parks needs there are, and we set a priority, because we always gotta set priorities. And, and this weekend, there's another opportunity to set priorities for all of the city. And we need to do that. So, um, I'm, I'm ready to listen to what our mayor has to say.
Okay, I'm gonna go to councilman.
Or Linda, sorry.
That's all right. I just wanna get councilman raised because I'm gonna try to wind it up and then solidify kind of where we're at. And so that might help me to, to go last to make sure we're all on the same, or kind of directing on the, on a good page.
Yeah, I think, um, so I, I think that one, keep in mind that one of the reasons that Posey Park was, um, a reason for the measure K funds or the argument was that it's connected to a Caltrain, um, Caltrain station, um, which the county uses. Um, so there is a stronger argument for measure K funds when you link it to the county because they're meant for county funds. So it doesn't mean that cities haven't received those funds. I believe, uh, one of the cities in, um, down the peninsula or up the peninsula received almost a million dollars for their park. Um, there's, and there's a number of gives similar to that. Uh, but I did just wanna say that that was one of the reasons that, um, my focus was intentionally around Posey Park was really to improve our chances of getting, um, the funds and hopefully more funds. Um, and then I did wanna ask, with the development that's coming from YouTube and some of these other sources, how quickly can that park and loo fund be replenished?
The park and loo fund will not be replenished. Uh, the park and loo fee was eliminated, um, when we created a comprehensive set of development impact fees. And so money will go for new development into development impact fees. And there is a portion of development impact fees that can be used for park construction. I know that's a nuanced question, but sort of think about it as a $3 million in the park and loo fund that, uh, the 101 San Bruno that paid that roughly $3 million, that's the last project that I believe that will pay into that fund. All of the other new development that will pay development impact fees. And I'm, uh, and there's a portion of development impact fees for community parks. So the answer to your question is, how soon will we receive development impact money to improve our parks? Unfortunately, I cannot answer that question. Uh, the, the next projects up that will pay significant funds in the, into the, uh, development impact fees will very likely be commercial projects. So that's YouTube phase one. And that will come before the city council later on this, later on this year, when they decide to build phase one and, uh, and, and those payments are due, I believe, at, uh, certain, at building permit issuance. And so that's at least a year from the time of it. And so we may be talking about 24 months, um, if that project proceeds rapidly. There's, uh, improvements at the Sears, uh, building, uh, and a potential redevelopment there, likely two years away before those feet are completed. So I, I would, I would say there's several years before there are significant development impact, uh, uh, dollars paid to do significant park.
Okay, yeah, I, I do remember when that change happened and I was assured that there were still gonna be money going specifically to parks. So, um, I'm glad to hear that. Okay, thank you.
You, and Ms., uh, Councilmember Hamilton, you're gonna be important because I have you kind of on two different options. So it might be good to hear from you.
Well, I, um, actually, I just had a clarifying question on the, the, um, the, the impact fees. Um, city manager, you said that, that a, a portion of those are, can be used for parks. What is that portion? Is it a set, is it a set percentage? You know, every dollar that comes in, you know, X, X cents goes to parks and this much goes to water and sewer or whatever? How, how does that, how does that work?
There's a detailed explanation of that and I will not try and do it from memory because I will not get it correct. But at a high level, uh, our development impact fees have several buckets. One for, um, infrastructure, uh, one, one for parks. Uh, there's a, there's, I believe, five different buckets where the, the money goes into. One is for affordable housing, for example. And so the, the money is paid, uh, divided into the buckets and you can use from, uh, one, one of, one of the pots or you can actually borrow from the other pots. But why don't I just say that we will find that staff report and there's actually a, a great section in that staff report that articulates all the different, um, types of, of impact fees and how they can be utilized and what for that.
Thank you. Good luck, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, city manager, um, if option, because obviously, uh, the team is on four or five. If, and option five was pursued as far as for staff now to sit down and see where monies can be, uh, raised, acquired, gained. Um, however, but through the budgeting process, we, we see that that's not going to be able to come to fruition. Then is there the option to scale it back to an option four, for example?
So the answer is yes, but it would cost additional money. And, and let's talk in detail. If we went with option five, the very next step is to engage the services of a park designer to design, to re-envision the park. And there will be certain line items in that scope of work, right? There'll be community visioning, outreach, uh, uh, outreach site surveys. And all of that work, or a large portion of that work is not useful if we decide to reuse existing infrastructure. And so it's really not possible to engage the services of a landscape architect to begin the process of re-envisioning the park and do design work if we're gonna utilize a significant portion of the existing infrastructure. Some of that work will be beneficial, but the vast majority of it will be tossed out because we're looking at sort of converting fountains to planter boxes and, um, and, and re, and adding murals and, and other ways to sort of unify the existing infrastructure.
Okay, but, but this is to give direction to try, because it's not budgeted, is try to find the funds first, correct? Before hiring somebody. Cause there is, the money is not there, correct?
So this is direction on which path to take. And then we will identify funds to further than it never. So if the city council chose option five, uh, our next step would be through the budget process to identify, uh, funds for a landscape architect to begin the process of re-envisioning Posey Park. Estimation, that will be, if not 100,000, uh, potentially more. And so we would look to fund a, a park architect at somewhere between 100 to 200,000 dollars to begin this effort. If we wanted to sort of, uh, forthrightly, uh, begin so. If we're looking at options one through four, uh, certainly, uh, we can, I think, find the funds to do option one and somewhere between options two through, um, or I think that that is something that we can work to identify funds or execute on, uh, within, within 12 months.
Okay, um, and, and like I said, I think people are to option four and five, so I haven't heard anybody acknowledge one, two, or three, just so we can kind of scale this down. You know, to me, if I had this conversation with somebody, it's just, you know, the intentions are great to say, well, why don't we, you know, do so much and then we'll, we can always come back and do it again. Costs go up, things happen. Uh, as you get off the train station, this is a visual. Um, the way that mound is, I think, for visual purposes, uh, for enforcement driving by is not, it's not a good thing. I think there's a lot that can be done. So in my mind, at this time, uh, I would say option five. Uh, because I think, you know, you, 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 this is what we already talked about with streetscape plans, that's why the photo is there. And so that was what, when we had outreach and we had community involvement and the walkthroughs and et cetera. So that's kind of where I'm at at this moment. And, and I wanna kind of recap what I heard and, and please, this would be very helpful to correct me. Uh, at this time, I'm hearing from, um, Councilmember Mason, option four. Councilmember Salazar, option five. Council, uh, Vice Mayor Medina, option four. Uh, myself, option five. And then Mr. Hamilton, it was four, but funding kind of was variable where, where I'm at too, is right? It was the funding, that's why I was asking that question. So, yeah.
Exactly.
So.
So is everybody else accurate on their positions?
Have I made any errors? Uh, I'm not seeing anybody chiming in, um, so I'm guessing that is, oh, oh, Vice Mayor, am I incorrect?
No, I, I, I didn't wanna put it like that, the, the pressure on, on, on Tom, uh, our Councilman Hamilton. The idea here is, okay, so we'll look at, the worst thing is to hire somebody and the plan sits on the shelf for years. Right? And, and the city manager just said, um, the additional funding from development isn't gonna come for a couple of years. So, um, figuring what, what we can do to keep it, to make it not look as bad as it does right now. If, if, wow, so if we could, uh, get the grants, great, but we don't know the, the, we haven't assessed all our parks and how much that's gonna cost. So I think, I think we need to take a little bit of a break here.
Well, let me ask you, Vice Mayor, and, and, and Councilmember Hamilton started nodding his head. Uh, and, and staff, you have to chime in, please. Are we saying on Posey, what I'm hearing from us, on the greenery and landscaping, it is 5-0. We want that to proceed forward. On that Centennial Park for the 80 cow, 80. Maybe I'm hungry. Um, is, uh, to, it was a 5-0 to move forward on that. On the Posey Park, it's, it's a split, uh, group, uh, at this moment, for various reasons. Uh, uh, city manager, do we need an absolute definitive here? Or you, you, you tell me where we're at as far as timeline and, we're moving on, on topics.
So, cool. So again, this project really began from an ask from council to say, there may be the potential for 200 to 300,000 dollars of measure K funding. What interim improvements can we make to unify the area? And we have come back with options one through four, which involve reusing the existing infrastructure. There is an option five, which is totally re-envisioning the entire area, uh, likely demolition of the fountain and opening up the area and place-making. We don't know what that will look like now. Uh, but we know that we need to, if we go down that right, embark on a landscape architect to help us with that visioning and, and that placement. And so staff right now is, um, looking for council to sort of pick the lane we're going down. Uh, and then we will, uh, forthrightly identify funding and, and move towards execution. And so.
I understand that, uh, city manager, the question was, does staff need a direction this, this evening? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that was the question. Councilmember Hamilton, please.
So if there was funding, I would be voting for an option five. There is not. And the, the, uh, the, the thought of having to use a, a significant portion of our park and loo fee when we have many, um, other needs for parks across San Bruno, um, is not palatable to me. And the, I, I agree that if we, I, I don't agree. I fear and the, the, the probability would be very, very high that if we, if we pursue option five, that it will end up on the shelf, um, for, for a significant period. So I'm gonna, I'll, I'll be supporting option four tonight.
And then Vice Mayor, are you still with option four?
Um, Mr. Mayor, yeah, for, for this setting right now, but we're having a priority setting meeting in a couple of days. And there's other things that are more important than Posey Park, in my opinion. So, um, I, I would, wanted to just leave you with that and.
Well, that's why I was asking, that's why I was asking the city manager, do we need it tonight? And I'm hearing the answer was, he told, unless I misunderstood.
And that's fine. That, that this could, this is a strategic initiative that will probably be added on and we'll talk about it on Saturday morning at eight o'clock.
City manager.
Yes. Further clarification. We are not asking the city council to allocate funds tonight. What we are asking is to give direction for us to work towards identifying funds for the budget process. And so your final decision on this will come when you adopt the budget and fund the project. Caveat being, we heard you tonight saying, if you can find funds to move faster, uh, with Centennial Plaza, please do so and don't wait till the budget. Saturday morning's priority setting process is talking about the whole list of city council priorities. Not just the streetscape, uh, but a whole list of priorities. That conversation will also not be allocating of dollars. But it will be high-level setting the priority projects that you want the organization to work on. And so I do think that there is a difference between the conversation we're having today, the conversation we'll be having Saturday, and the final budget decision that you will make in June that will set the course of what we work on for fiscal year 21, 22. And so the, the ask that we have tonight is, um, what direction will we be proceeding down so that we can, uh, so that we can, uh, uh, bring a budget to you?
Okay, so Vice Mayor's at, he's asking for an option. So, you're with option four? Four, four. And then, uh, Councilmember Mason had four, and, and fine, we, we, we need to, to move forward on this. And I think we've talked well and, and, uh, on this task. So, why don't we go with option four? And, uh, that is by consensus, and, um, it is option four. Anybody can correct me if I'm incorrect in my counting. Oh.
And Mayor Medina, I, I would, I would caveat that to say that if the funds.
I just lost visual, so you go, go right ahead.
Thank you. I just wanna caveat that to say that, um, I, I don't disagree with Councilmember Salazar's, um, point around, um, being, this being part of the longer streetscape plan. So, if there's funds that staff can identify that doesn't take away from the other projects and the other initiatives, I'd definitely be happy to reconsider it when we get to the budget season. So, thank you.
And I think everybody's feeling that same way.